The following was recorded in front of a live studio audience at the Studio 21 Podcast Cafe. This is the United Podcast Network.
The following program is closed captioned for the thinking impaired.
By Jaber, I will rule the world!
You think he's gone? He's not gone! That's the whole point! He's never gone!
Is this some radical new therapy?
You see?
Would help if I had my headphones on, right? Alrighty. Let's get this show on the road. Hi, how you guys doing? My name is Tom Duggan here with the Paying Attention Podcast. Hi, I'm Top Two Guys Smoke Shop at the Studio 21 Podcast Cafe. Got a great show for you today. We are, uh, before I get to my guest, we're gonna talk a little bit about what's been going on in the news very quickly, because we want to get as much time in with my guest as we possibly can. Today, we've got Methuen City Councilor Nick DiZorglio is with us. Um, did your colleagues are gonna get very mad at you for being here, you know?
Oh, I don't-
They're trying very hard to get Neil to stop coming on my show and anybody Methuen who's got any credibility. Sabre and McCarthy are doing, they're trying to make deals. I'll vote for your thing if you get off Duggan's show. So, uh, expect when the show is over to get a lot of blowback for being here.
I mean, you know, we agree to disagree ninety percent of the time, you and I, Tom, so...
That's not gonna save you.
Hey, you know-
Not with them anyway. With me, you're good. Like, I can disagree with anybody and still be friends, but some of them, not so much. They're not quite as mature, I think.
Individual contributor, at this point.
Right, right. So, there's a lot of stuff going on. I just want to breeze through a couple of things. On Sunday, um, a Back the Blue Rally, a Black the Blue Rally for Pro Police Rally in Wilmington. It's a town common at two o'clock. I've been asked to be a feature speaker, and when I look at the lineup, I'm really honored to be one of the speakers. We've got Jim Lyons, Chairman of the Massachusetts Republican Party. Uh, we've got Alec DeFrusche, who's a candidate for state rep. We've got Rayla Campbell, who's running for Congress. Um, we've got Kevin O'Connor, who's also running for Congress, and we've got the Bristol County Sheriff, Tom Hodgson, which I'm glad he's gonna be there because I have some conversations I need to have with him. He's, um, he's not quite on board with a lot of things that he should be, and we're gonna be having a conversation about that. Maybe even publicly, that's how I do most of my stuff. I have no problem humiliating people whatsoever, because I'm so humiliated about everything I do in public that it really doesn't matter anymore. I'm completely thick-skinned about it. So, uh, we're asking people to come, um, Sunday at two o'clock on the Wilmington Town Common for a Back the Blue Rally, Pro Police Rally. Um, this is gonna be my, I think, my fifth rally that I'm speaking at. Um, the last four went very, very well. In fact, the last one we did in Methuen, we asked the Blue Angels to come, uh, to provide security, because we got word the morning of the rally that Black Lives Matter was tweeting out all our stuff, and we wanted to make sure that we had some security. Um, this rally is not a rally that I'm organizing. I've only been asked to speak at it. So, I don't know what the security is, uh, but I also did reach out to some of our friends in the biker community. Uh, Blue Angels are like retired cops, retired firefighters, former Marines, um, so they know exactly what to do. Last time they just came, we were at Methuen High School, and they came and they basically just turned, put their, um, motorcycles sideways and lined a circle like around the entire... So, basically, you had to go through them to get in, and they were screening people too. Like, they were checking people out up and down, like, okay, this guy's all right, let him in. Um, and it's unfortunate that you have to do that, but with the violence, the anti-police violence by the left-wing fascists all across this country, uh, against police and those who support them, um, it's gotten to a point where we have to think this way. Because in the old America, you could have a pro-police rally, and people who didn't agree with you would just not go because they didn't agree with you. Today, they show up and start beating people up. So, um, please come. We want you to be there. Especially if there's gonna be any kind of like violence or riots or anything. We're gonna need as many people on our side as we can, right? And I'm prepared. Um, it's probably gonna be a peaceful rally. Uh, we're trying everything that we can to make this a peaceful rally. If you've seen any of my speeches at pro-police rallies, um, in the past, uh, I'm probably gonna outdo that this time. I wrote my speech last night at like two o'clock in the morning, and I went through and I read it and I went, "Yeah, I definitely should not give this speech," which is exactly why I'm giving it. It's exactly why I'm giving it. Um, in the news, was it yesterday or the day before? My days all run together because I don't sleep much. Uh, Saint Kamala Harris has been nominated by Joe Biden to be the next President of the United States. Um, not even Mother Teresa is as holy as the sacred Kamala. That is, if you watch CNN, MSNBC, ABC, NBC, CBS, uh, MSNBC, if you watch any of the, other than Fox, if you watch any of the news channels, she is the second coming of Christ. Mother Teresa prays to her. That's how holy Kamala Harris is. And what's amazing about this, and I'm not gonna spend a lot of time on it, but what's amazing about what we're watching at the national level, is after four years of Trump is a racist, Trump is a white supremacist, Trump is a Nazi, Trump had three scoops of ice cream while everybody else had two, now suddenly they're clutching their pearls because people are insulting Kamala Harris as if that's over the line. There was a meme going around that she's some kind of a whore, and all my liberal friends, "This is over the line! Disrespecting this woman! Look how accomplished she is!" Yeah, well, Donald Trump's pretty fucking accomplished too. And you're calling him a Nazi every day on CNN, with no evidence, by the way. They just make stuff up. So, please spare me the fake outrage. Kamala Harris, we all know her background. Uh, I was talking to one of my Facebook friends this morning who didn't know her background. They kept challenging me, "How do you know? How do you know?" Just Google her. It's all out there. It's all out there, how she slept her way to the top in California. It's all out there, all of it. So, don't take my word for it. Just Google it and find out for yourself. I don't know how this woman is going to be the next President of the United States. I don't. Um, but she could be, and so I think she deserves as much scrutiny as Donald Trump has gone through over the last four years. Um, you're not gonna be able to attack her or criticize her because she's a woman. They'll call you a sexist. Well, I'm a sexist. Okay, so I'm a sexist. That doesn't make what she says right. And if you criticize her because now she's supposedly, I guess, kind of, a woman of color. She's a woman of color. She's half Indian and half Jamaican. She doesn't look like a woman, she doesn't look like a black woman to me. She doesn't look like a woman of color to me. If she walked in here today, she would just look like everybody else. She doesn't look like a woman of color. But because supposedly she's been anointed a woman of color, we can't criticize her now or we're gonna be racist. It's okay, I'm a racist. That still doesn't make what she says right. So, now the dynamic is you could say anything you want about Donald Trump, no matter how over the line it is. He's a Nazi, he kicks puppies on Sundays, he burns down churches, he steals pocketbooks from little old ladies just for fun. But if you criticize Kamala Harris because she believes in defunding the police, that's sexism! It's racism! Here's the funny thing. And I went through this this morning with Sue Perry on my Facebook page. On the one hand, men and women are supposed to be equal. Supposed to treat them the same. Not supposed to treat women differently than men. On the other hand, Trump's a racist Nazi, but if you criticize Kamala Harris, that's bad because she's a woman. You can't criticize her because she's a woman. We're supposed to treat whites and blacks equally in this country. I believe in that. But you can criticize the white president, but you can't criticize the so-called woman of color, who's the vice presidential candidate, or that's racism. So, nothing the Democrat Party believes, says they believe, comports with anything else they say they believe. On the one hand, we're supposed to be equal. On the other hand, women are supposed to be wilting little flowers that you can't insult because you'll hurt their little feelings. And I don't know how Democrats square this in their head. I just don't understand it. And I think they just hate Trump so much that they'll just put up with anything. They'll put up with Biden sexually, being accused of sexually molesting a woman? That's okay, because he's not Donald Trump. But Donald Trump talks about women letting him grab their crotches. That's rape. See the difference here? So, it's all, it's not just a double standard, it's a triple standard. It's a triple standard. That it's okay, if you're a conservative and you're black, it's okay to be racist against them, but if you're a liberal and you're black, no, 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 you can't criticize anything they say. Can't disagree with them on stop signs, can't disagree with them on the speed limit. Everything you say that doesn't comport with what Kamala Harris says makes you a racist and a sexist. This is now gonna be the dynamic from now until Election Day. And you watch. Donald Trump called her nasty for the way she treated Brett Kavanaugh, and she was nasty. All morning this morning on CNN, nasty is a code word for sexist language. Like, they just have to make this shit up. They literally make it up. Like, if he said, "You know, I don't really think she's a nice person," that's code for racist language from eighteen fourteen when a slave owner once said that. No, it isn't! You're lying. You're making it up. She should be held to the same standard as Mike Pence. Biden should be held to the same standard as Donald Trump. If you can call Donald Trump a Nazi, even though it's not true and you have no evidence, then people ought to be able to call names to Joe Biden without you guys clutching your pearls and faking outrage. And the same thing for Pence and Kamala Harris. Uh, one more thing before we get to our sponsor. That's what happens when the mouth is not synced in with the brain, with our guest. Uh, Monday, we had our scholarship presentation. And when we left, we thought we had about fourteen thousand dollars in donations that we'd given out. And then yesterday morning, I got a phone call from Tom Troy, who said he wanted to give a thousand dollars. He originally said he wanted to give a thousand, but then his election came up as President of the Union, and he couldn't touch the money. He was lame duck. He got re-elected last week. They swore him in. He went to the board. They gave us a thousand dollars more, five hundred for the Whittier student Lauren Fitzgerald, and another five hundred for the vocational school student Aaliyah Laclerk, whom we're having a very difficult time getting Jessica to coordinate getting us in a room so we can get a check with her because she might die from COVID. Gotta run. COVID's gonna get you. Gotta run! Run as fast as you can. It's coming. Here it is! So, um, we're trying to get, we're trying to coordinate getting a picture with Aaliyah Laclerk, uh, with somebody on the Valley Patriot Bash Committee, handing her a check for the newspaper. Um, and, you know, normally, we have a rule, and I only veered from it a little bit this year because of COVID. Not because it exists, but because of the hysteria. We have a rule at the bash. If the kid doesn't show up, she doesn't get her scholarship. Period. And it's never happened. We've never had, we, kids have called us and said, "I don't think I can make it. I'm sorry you don't get a scholarship." And suddenly, they're in the room. And this year, only because of COVID, and because we weren't doing it at a bash, and we were doing it here instead, and we were doing it four months later, I said, "If they can't be in the room, that's fine, but we still have to be able to, like, get a picture of, you know, us handing the check so that the donors know the kid got the check." And the pushback I'm getting. I know Jess is liberal, and I know she thinks that this is, everyone's gonna die from COVID, but we've gotta get this done for the next paper. So, I'm gonna try and reach out to the kid myself. Um, each kid got over two thousand dollars, which is great, and I'm just gonna read this real quick. We're gonna talk to Nick. So, uh, here's our final total. It was a little different than Monday. It's a little higher. Uh, Dan Cody Memorial Scholarship winner Jake Nicolosi, two thousand five hundred eighty dollars. Uh, Lawrence High School Junior ROTC Scholarship, she may not get her money either because she didn't show up. We're trying to coordinate that too. Uh, we have two thousand four hundred ninety dollars for her, if we can coordinate that. Two thousand one thirty-five for the Michelle DeLuca Benedetti Scholarship for, I'm sorry, I screwed this up twice, didn't I? I did this on the show Monday, too. I keep screwing up the code. The Cody Scholarship is anna bona. Lawrence High Scholarship is Camila Herrera. The Michelle DeLuca Benedetti Scholarship is Jake Nicolosi from Haver High School. Our Vokes Scholarship is Aaliyah Laclerk at twenty-nine hundred dollars instead of twenty-four. Our Whittier Scholarship winner is now twenty-five hundred instead of two thousand, and let me just double-check that to make sure that's right. Yep, it's right. And our Patricia Perry Memorial Scholarship, the first one, at two thousand seven hundred dollars for Carrie Horan and Zoe Chewie. So, we appreciate everybody who gave to all the scholarships. We'll have all your names listed in the paper. There is a story up online. So, I think that's pretty much it. Um, in the studio with us today is Nick DiZorglio. I've gotta say, and I can't believe I'm saying it as I'm hearing the words come out of my own mouth, but I never thought I'd see a day, especially after I criticized him so much on the school committee, never thought I'd see a day where I'd have Nick DiZorglio sitting here in my studio, and I get to turn to him and say, "How did you become the voice of reason on the Methuen City Council? How did that happen? How, I mean, you're the new guy, and I'm kicking the crap out of you on the school committee staff and the Judy Scano staff, and I'm telling people during the election, 'He hasn't proven himself. Don't vote for the guy,' and I'm regretting it now. I'm totally regretting it now, because I'm watching these meetings, and I'm watching certain councilors drone on and on for an hour about stop signs. I'm watching people use their personal political vendettas against city workers like Joe Solomon and certain other people. And then you pop up and go, "Why are we doing this? Let's just take a vote. Why are we getting involved in all this stuff? Let's just take the vote. We all know what we're gonna do." And I'm sitting there going, "Wow, of all these nine people, there's one guy there, you and Joel, I think sometimes, who are totally the voice of reason on this council."
Well, I'll first start with saying I now know why the Podcast Network has a disclaimer at the end of your show that says, you know, uh, "The views of this person is not the views of the podcast." But, you know, I think there's a balance that needs to happen on the council, and that's something that I think previous councils lacked, was a balance. And I think on this council, you have the first council that every single person on there has an education. Um, they're all pretty much homeowners or have family in the area that have, you know, a history here, and I think we're all well-rounded in the fact that we're also, our median age, I think, is forty years old. So, we all bring something to the table that shows that we want to move the city a little bit forward because we've been pushed so far behind the last few years. And I think the council today is, again, well-structured, well-built. You have some criticisms, biases, but again, that's gonna come in politics. For me, it's, I'm tired of sitting still, and I think that's where we've been for almost probably two terms now. Um, and again, you know, I wasn't the most popular person coming into this council.
I know. I was one of the reasons for that. I was telling everybody not to vote for you.
But again, you know, it comes-
And by the way, I was telling people to vote for DJ Borogad. I'm regretting both of them.
Well, DJ and I have, I've known each other for fifteen years, so-
Nice kid. Nice kid.
I mean, again, it comes down with experience. Um, you know, I'm the only person on the council that currently has sat on both sides of the government. Um, I like to say I have some experience in budget-making, and I also like to say that I, again, I'm tired of seeing the city sit still. And I think when you have a contract or, uh, you know, an ordinance or resolution on the table, and you already can gauge the interest of where everyone's gonna make a decision, why delay the outcome when you have pretty much everyone ready to, you know, pull the trigger on it?
Right.
And, you know, I think in some cases in the old-school, you know, councils where some of our counselors are still falling in between, you know, previous habits to new habits, it's just, uh, let's put it on the table. Let's table it. Let's get a second opinion. Well, we're already on our second opinion.
Everybody knew how everybody was gonna vote. Two more weeks was not gonna make a difference.
It wasn't gonna, even if it was two more days, you know, why let people who have lives that are gonna be affected by this decision sit idle? And I hate, I hate waiting, you know, it's kinda like on a Friday, your boss calls you at four-thirty saying, "Hey, I got a meeting at one o'clock with you on Monday."
Right.
And that whole weekend, you're sitting there, sick to your stomach. What's gonna happen? And the other, and the last minute comes up, and it's like, oh, you know, you're getting in this new project, or you're-
Right.
Something else is gonna happen. But, you know, when it's detrimental and life-changing, you know, to like a contract, a raise, a position, uh, you know, um, you know, added monies, um, even getting a new, you know, like for the fire department, getting some of those positions saved. You know, those people are sitting back saying, you know, "What am I gonna do in two days?" We pulled the trigger and made the decision. You know what you're gonna do.
You guys have been negotiating to try and keep as many cops as you can. Where does it stand now? Originally, there's gonna be four cops laid off, then they were talking maybe eight cops getting laid off. Uh, then the mayor, I guess, found some money. You guys moved some things around. Are there gonna be any layoffs on the police department? Have-
As of right now, I believe, I spoke to the mayor this morning, um, on our weekly call, and it sounds like there's one position that's still out there that we're looking to save. You know, again, it goes back to why, why did we pass a budget when we weren't ready for it?
Right.
You know, we wanted, I think the mayor's office and some of the councils wanted to lock in the concessions that were made across the board. And by doing that, we now passed a budget where those concessions are now locked in.
Right.
And now you can either open the budget back up and make more cuts, or you can add monies down the road, which, again, I think that's, personally, and even the SFO Sean Cronin even agreed with this, uh, you know, you can do it, but it's not the best way to run a city budget. But, um, as of right now, it sounds like we'll probably have saved all the cops that are gonna go through the academy.
Now, you wanted a thirty-day budget.
Correct.
I think I'm probably the only person on the planet that agreed with you.
No, the state agreed with me.
Okay, so me, the state, and you. That was it. But nobody in the city council agreed with you.
No, I don't, the city council, but anyone outside the city council, there were a lot of people that did. I mean, some of the department heads agreed.
What would that have changed? What, the direction that we're on now? We've only got one cop that we may have to lay off. What would have changed had we done the thirty-day budget?
Nothing, other than the fact that we would have stayed within our means in the thirty days. There would have been no cuts, any positions that were still on the table and/or personnel, they would have still been working through August thirty-first. There's a fake facade that came up in all this, and again, some people bought it, some people didn't, but some people thought the city still needed to move forward with the budget. The fake facade was whatever debt we created is now gonna be broken up over ten months instead of, you know, the eleven months if we voted to pause the budget between now and August thirty-first. That's false. You're structuring your budget within a ten-month radius at that point. Whatever funds that you're getting this month and/or, um, during the one-twelfth budget, that negative number only falls within that month, and the profits from that month only fall within that category. Sean Cronin said, "For a city that relies so much on state aid, it doesn't hurt the city of Methuen to move forth with a one-twelfth budget, considering the state hasn't provided its Chapter Seventy money or the extra funding that the city would get," which at this point-
Chapter Seventy is education money.
Education money, which is at this point, eight hundred and change that would be going to the schools, extra than that was forecasted by the superintendent. And we are actually getting on the city side forecasted another six hundred thousand dollars, um, from the state. But those are committed numbers. They're not actual definite guaranteed numbers. When I say I'm committing to something, doesn't mean I'm gonna follow through with it either. The state's budget will be finalized hopefully by October, which at that point in time, whatever the final numbers are-
You're gonna have to change everything again.
We may have to change. We may have to open and cut. We may have to, you know, we may allocate more money, but at this point with COVID being, you know, the fifty-two-card pickup, throw-up-in-the-air situation, I don't see anything other than negative numbers coming our way.
Right. Um, there's a, um, a big move behind the scenes, and now not so much behind the scenes. It's somewhat out because, uh, some of your colleagues ran to the Globe, about Joe Solomon. And I want your opinion on this because you've been, I think, much more silent than the other counselors on this. I don't think you've been very bombastic with any of your language on Joe Solomon. He's been investigated by the FBI. He's been investigated by the DEA. He's been investigated by HUD. He's been investigated by the Attorney General's Office. Um, he's been investigated by everybody you can imagine, and he's still here. He got his job back after he was fired, and they said he basically didn't do anything wrong, at least not anything worth being fired. And now your colleagues have been pushing to try and either get him to resign or humiliate him publicly with all this information that they fed to the Globe, none of which was new, by the way. Like, nothing that they talked about was new. Everybody knows he owns a private investigation service. By the way, they sponsored this program, I have full disclosure. Um, everybody knows that, you know, whatever it is that they've said about him, how much money he makes and all this other stuff, and yet, for some reason, I'm reading in the Globe that the council is probably gonna take a unanimous vote of no confidence in the chief. And so, the only thing that I can see, that anybody has a legitimate reason to be upset about with the chief, is how much he gets paid. But other than that, other than what he gets paid, supposedly he's like the highest paid, I'm not even sure that's true, but let's say it is. He's the highest-paid police officer in the entire country, in the world, in the United Federation of Planets. He gets paid more money than everybody. Is that enough to take a vote of no confidence in the chief? Is that enough to make, uh, to try and get the guy fired, to humiliate him? Is Sabre, McCarthy, Samad, and Borogad have continually pushed the narrative that he's mismanaging his department and that he's corrupt? And yet, have yet, they've presented zero evidence of either. What are your thoughts on all this?
Well, I'm not gonna talk about, you know, the actual, I haven't seen a resolution. So, I mean, I've heard of it. The Boston Globe called me a few times last week. My comment in the paper was, you know, "I think this is a department issue at this point. I think the mayor has complete authority and power to be able to negotiate anything, a good deal at this point." And what's a good deal? It's whatever monies we can save, whatever monies we can regain, and still be able to have, you know, a strong police department. But any resolution I get in front of me, I think is, at this point, a hearsay bias because we are in the middle of an audit. You don't jump the gun before an audit's completed, because it's, if it puts a taste, it doesn't matter, again, nothing that we're doing right now has anything to do with the police contracts. False narrative.
Right.
Um, this is completely about management of the department. This has nothing to do with the contracts. But if we're gonna go back to Joe Solomon, I have nothing on him right now to be able to say anything negative, other than, you know, he doesn't, I mean, he makes a lot of money.
Right, right. That's my point.
But that's due to bad contracts-
Right.
That previous mayor signed, and not the previous mayor, two mayors back. Got him a five-year deal, signed the contract, and called it a day.
Right.
I didn't negotiate that contract. This council didn't negotiate this contract. It goes back to who was dealing with contracts four years ago, all right? The city has a poor, horrible, I always wanna say another word, but a horrible-
That's allowed on the show, by the way.
Yeah, well, I'm a PG person here. Um, a horrible track record of negotiating contracts. And that's not just on the police department. That's the school department. That's the DPW office. That's also the fire department. We need to protect our employees by making sure that the correct, and our constituents, by the way, by making sure that the legal representation is brought to the table at each of these contracts. And it seems like every time a contract gets through, legal is the last one that has saw it, and they're looking at a final draft saying, "Whoa, whoa, wait, 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 we gotta pass it tomorrow." There's a procurement process here. There is a legal step in a contract negotiation field, and any company, it starts with the writer, the negotiator, legal, and then HR. We haven't had an HR department in the city until just recently. You don't have a business or a city of fifty thousand people and just say, "Hey, Tom, sign this bottom line, and then I'll, in a few weeks, we'll figure out what was the final outcome of it." You need to actually go through a two-to-three-month process on negotiating contracts. It seems like every time a contract went to the table on the city side, you had a mayor that just said, "Uh, yeah, sure, let's just go with it." And that's why we're in the situation we are today. And I hate to say it, Jim DeJugua had a bad deal. I think he would have still been mayor if we didn't, we had good contracts in place. Neil Perry's coming from a business perspective, and he's putting in great department heads. The council, time and time again, have said, "Mr. Mayor, good job on putting department heads into place and putting these department heads in correct positions and getting the certifications and et cetera." So, I think going back to what the council is doing, we're in the middle of an audit. Whatever the audit findings are, if you wanna put a resolution at that point, then be my guest. But anything between now and that audit result is just jumping the gun and creating a bias. And I've said that to DJ. Um, I've said that to, um, Counselor Sabre as well. I think, again, I still haven't received the resolution. I've requested it a few times, so-
Well, the Globe has apparently seen it, and you're in the city council. You haven't seen it, so it's pretty amazing how they're obfuscating you.
Any resolution that comes up between now and the third, uh, which is the next meeting, if I don't see it, I'm voting present.
Right. So, DJ Borogad has said it-
And the reason why I'm voting present, sorry to interrupt, is because giving a yes or no vote continues to show that I'm making a decision before the audits come out.
Right, right.
I'm not going to make a decision on anything on the police department until I see that audit, and that's what the city of Methuen should be asking for as well.
Right.
What's the results of those audits?
Well, they had a bagman on the audit team, and when the bagman on the audit team stepped aside because he had a conflict of interest, because word started getting around that he had a conflict of interest, all of a sudden, once the bagman was gone on the audit team, they said, "Oh, no, no, we're not gonna wait for the audit anymore. Now we know Joe Solomon's gonna be okay in the audit, so now we wanna do a vote of no confidence." I guess my question is, DJ Borogad has said at several meetings, and I like DJ, I just don't agree with him, but DJ has said at several meetings that, um, the police chief is, quote, "mismanaging the department." Um, he is, he and others have also said that he's corrupt, um, including Jim McCarthy, who was also called him corrupt. So, I guess my question is, you're their colleague. Have your colleagues shown you any evidence at all, publicly or otherwise, that says, "Yeah, Joe Solomon's corrupt. Yeah, this is the reason why they're actually doing this. Now it makes sense."
I'm not gonna comment on anything right now on the police. Again, additionally, anything I say about the police audit or the chief may show a bias. Uh, again, additionally, anything I say about the police audit or the chief may show a bias.
Well, I know, I just wanna know, I just wanna know if your colleagues have, they've made public comments and they haven't said to the public, here's why, have they said it to you?
I have not seen anything in, 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 I haven't seen anything on my table.
Right.
I'll say that, I haven't seen anything on the table yet, but again, the, the Public Safety Committee takes a lot of that stuff into hands, and the people that you named are on the Public Safety Committee. Whatever comes from them to my table, I'll, again, I haven't seen anything from that committee yet.
Do you think the chief is corrupt?
I, I, again, I don't know, I don't know personally, I, I.
But you have no evidence that he is.
I have no evidence he is.
Do you think he's mismanaged the department? Cuz they are two different things.
I think there could be a better management of the department, yes, I do. I, I think having police officers on the street that don't have academy training behind them puts the city at risk. I think the city um, of Methuen especially being a borders, a border city to a state um, like San, um, a state like New Hampshire and Salem, New Hampshire being right there, and then Lawrence as well. I think we need academy trained police officers on the, on the street before, you know, a reservist or um, what's the word I'm looking for?
For the intermittents.
Intermittents, thank you, intermittents. Uh, you need to have academy trained, and you shouldn't be on the, on the street six, seven, eight months down the road from starting and still not going to the academy.
Right. Um, when you took over, it was pre-COVID, and so everybody kinda had an idea of what they wanted to accomplish in, in their two years on the council. And then COVID hit, which I think kinda just threw every, threw everything out the window. Um, have you, have you repurposed your goals, have you redone your goals, have you, I'm not saying it right, but have you, have you um, changed your outlook and what your goals are for the, for your two-year term before you either run or don't run for reelection because of COVID, or are you still on track for where you thought you would be?
I, I think I've added a few additional goals to the, to the situation, uh, actually since COVID. You know, you, you, you take, you take for granted going into an office every day and seeing your colleagues and being able to work in an office, and now that COVID's happened, a lot of our offices have shifted to remote work. Which is completely, and even in corporations, you know, a lot of people aren't supposed to be on a VPN. You know, they, they've only project a certain amount of people being able to remote detonate in. So in my situation, we've um, we started an IT subcommittee to be able to boost up our cybersecurity, boost up our um, VPN access, our remote capabilities. And also, we're looking forth um, on implementing um, the MUNIS system, which is a municipal finance ERP system, enterprise resource um, program that would be able to um, integrate into our city and be able to one, save us money and also, you know, when it comes to accounting, instead of using a, a calculator and a Rolodex of uh, Excel sheets, um, the MUNIS system would be able to literally watch our funding and our budget break into as we go. And i- i- and you know, if you recall some of the budget meetings in the last few years, it takes a, you know, the, the uh, CFO or the city accountant originally, minutes to hours to trying to find a report. This MUNIS system, all you have to do is click on the department, click on the number, and boom, it'd be there and within seconds.
And how does that help the average person at home?
Well, one, we, as a taxpayer, it, it will help us save the monies down the roads and we're not mismanaging money. So we may be able to say we're forecasting correctly with the MUNIS system, whereas right now we made it, we may not be forecasting correctly, the monies that are coming in. Also, the city website, you'll be able to do a heck of a lot more online payments and or money transitions, or transactions, I should say, into the system and be able to account it on our end sooner than later. At the same time, it's what used to take weeks to, to get a report back, or to get some sort of number back, or a license back, or um, or a permit back, that will take seconds into day or two.
Excellent.
Um, so the city's um, infrastructure, we've been boosting it, trying to get it going, uh, we live in, we, Methuen's has pretty much thrown its IT department out the door over the last ten years. And so, if you think about it, your laptop, you're gonna get a new laptop every four to five years now. Um, the system that we have is, is so old that people are still using desktops and, and plugging into switches and, and the wifi in that city hall has been horrible. So it, we're, we're boosting everything, making sure the infrastructure works for both our city employees, because again, your tax dollars are paying for these workers to do the day-to-day job um, for the city. If it's taking them longer to do their job, there's so much other things that they can be doing with their time. Um, so this will help with time management as well.
I don't remember how you voted on uh, on this item, but when the police chief came to the council during budget discussions and um, basically begged them not to cut money out of training, he revealed to the council, I think he revealed to the public for the first time, at least the first time I'd heard, that for the last two years, his officers have not gone for the state mandated training. And that if the council cuts money out of the training budget in the police department, uh, this year, they're also not, they're not gonna be complying with state mandated training.
Yeah, I think it passed to, to keep it, I don't think it was cut.
Oh, you don't think?
I don't think that piece was cut.
Yeah, you sure?
Yeah, I'm pretty sure, because that was on the second read, not the first read, it was on the second read about training. Maggie stepped in and the mayor stepped in to talk about the state mandated training, and I think I, I might be thinking of a different vote, but um, Councilor Samard also jumped in saying, no, this should be staying, and this is something that needed.
Right.
And I wanna say the person that brought it up was Councilor Finicaro, be, second read, she was cutting a lot of things. Um, but I, I'm pretty sure that vote failed to cut it.
Alright, how did you vote?
I voted no on ninety percent of that stuff, so I mean, again, I, the reason why I voted no on certain cuts was because I didn't believe in the budget. I voted yes on the things that I did think were necessary, and I voted yes on budgets that weren't affected by the COVID or cuts, so. Um, I, again, I wasn't a big believer of the budget, I voted no on it, I thought we should have continued with the one twelfth idea, but um, I think some of the cuts that were made, in addition, will probably go back to the budget, uh, once we, we get the state federal money as well. Um, because I think a lot of the, the departments right now are running on bare bones, and, and you can't run a municipality like Methuen right now. Um, you know, even during or post-COVID, um, the way we are.
The city council voted during the budget to cut a position out of the mayor's office. Um, I think, I think most people know that if it wasn't Tom Lucia who held that position, if it was Jim Smith, that wouldn't have happened. How did you vote on that?
So I voted no on principle because that was the first cut, and that was because they said it wrong. We can't, the way that this, Sean Cronin came in and stated, you can't cut a position, you can't cut a line item. So let's say there's three, A, B, C, and it equals a hundred thousand, alright? And each position is, actually, let's say there's four positions, make it easy math, twenty-five thousand each position, A, B, C, D, a hundred thousand. The way the council was voting was that, I'm gonna cut B from the budget. Well, the vote should have been, I'm cutting twenty-five thousand dollars from the bottom line.
Right.
And then that.
They still seem to be very confused about their role, as far as you cannot cut a line item out of the budget, you can only cut that amount that you wanna strike from the, from the bottom line budget of that budget.
It's mixed messages, it's because, it, you know, it, it comes down to who you're gonna listen to, because you have one opinion on one end, you have another opinion on another. I went with the state opinion. And the state opinion also said, go with the one twelve. But again, I, I voted no because of the, the legality of that vote. Um, and, and you and I both know, and a- again, I, I see some comments all the time about how I'm a Pollard, I, which I don't understand what that means.
And I can't figure it out.
I don't know what that means, but I, I, I know during the election, everyone said I'm a DeJuga person, I'm a Canaan person, and now all of a sudden I'm a Pollard and, and Perry person. I, I don't know how that works, but something that you know about me, and I'm not sure if some people know, I look at the data. I look, if you're gonna sway my vote, show me the data, show me the information, show me the numbers, and I'll go, I do not rubber stamp. I'm actually the person either you need to sway to be with the data, or you know my answer's a no or a yes, depending on what the situation is. I, I, I didn't take any money from the Perrys, I didn't take any money from the Pollards, I don't even think they voted for me.
Canans?
Uh, I did, I did take money from the Canans, and I did take money from DeJuga and Bill Manzi.
From DeJuga?
Um, well, I, I know the DeJuga family from years ago when, when uh, you know, I was an intern with Steve Bedore back in the day.
Just that his name was so talked during that election, I'm surprised you took money from him.
I, again, I think.
And I'm also surprised nobody used it against you.
I mean, again, I, I, for me, it, it's, it's all, I don't align with anyone.
Right.
If, if you wanted to donate money to me, I would have probably taken it.
After the, after the last year that I've seen that, my, I actually could have.
But again, I, I, for me, I'm not about size, I've told, I've told a lot of people that were on, if you watched the school committee meetings, you saw me and Jim go at it. I don't favor one person or the other. I think Neil Perry has done an, an okay job for the most part. Um, I, I would have said very differently a year ago from now. A year ago before, excuse me, during the election season, because actually, we were probably in this room right around this time for debates.
Right.
Um, you know, I, I didn't get that much support from politicians that are in Methuen right now.
Didn't like you.
No, he didn't like me, and then he probably, he probably still doesn't like me, but at least he respects the position.
I don't think that's true, I think there's been a change, like, people hear me say it, and I think when they hear someone like me say it, they go, oh yeah, they notice a little bit more, that you've become more of the voice of reason on that council than any kind of an obstructionist.
Uh, um, but that was, I, I'm, I'm doing the same thing that I was on the school committee though. My opinion is always based on the facts that I have in front of me, and here's.
Socialified Judy Scannell though.
Again, the facts in front of me were different, but we're not gonna rehash something that was four years ago, Jesus. It's like, come on.
Right.
But um, you know, for me, right now, this council, I think, has done more than the previous councils have, especially during COVID. We've been able to work together, have conversations, be able to build some sort of trust relationship among all of us. And I think, I think it's because of our education, I think it's because of probably not the big age gap either. You have a council that understands what the normal taxpayer in Methuen wants. And I think we're starting to see a transition or a wave of cleaning up some of the messes that have happened. I mean, for the fact that we, we were able to get a contract for the police superiors in front of us and be able to make a decision, that's more than anyone else did.
Let's talk about that, the decision was no.
It was.
Now, the, the choice on the council, for those at home, the choice was, um, Mayor Perry renegotiated the superior officer's contract that gave them a two and a half percent raise over six years. So yes, they got like the eighteen percent raise in year two, but then like in the last three years, they took zeros to even it out, to, to average it out. And if, if the council voted yes, that would be it. If the council voted no, the police are gonna go to court arbitration, and, and it could very well be on the hook for triple damages. And the council unanimously voted no, that was awfully bold, that, that, that took a lot of balls, I think, from the, whether I agree with it or not, I still think it took a lot of balls.
I think at this point, the council spoke that it should go to arbitration, it should have gone to arbitration back in October period, but.
Even if it cost you more money.
I think arbitration, it's a state, it's a state stamp, the state says, the state comes back and says, okay, um, Methuen, you're on the hook for this, we have to go with it.
Right.
Um, and I think that's the decision we need to go with, the arbitrator will come in and say, alright, Methuen, what's your finances? Okay, what's this contract scenario, what's this, again, it goes back to bad contract negotiations, and again.
But that's on the part of the city, like, if I, if I negotiate with the Studio Twenty-One Podcast Cafe, and, and I, and I rook Dave Garafalo into giving me twice as much money as he wanted to give me originally, that's, that's on him, it's not on me, like, I don't blame Joe Solomon for making all that money, I blame the people that signed the contract.
Contract, I agree with you, I do, but, and that's why we're in the situation we are, and that's why I think the arbitrators.
So you think, you think it's worth it to go to arbitration even though it might cost you more money?
I think arbitration is a.
Rather than settling it and just paying them, paying a short, smaller amount of money and letting it go.
Point, the arbitrators are probably the word.
Why is that?
I think, well, it's a state, state arbitration, so the state's gonna be overseeing it.
Even though it costs more money?
It might, it might not though.
But what if it does?
I don't think it will, I don't, I think the arbitrators are gonna come in, look at the financial situation that we're in. I think the state's gonna say, well, you did sign it, so this is why we're gonna rule on certain things for the, the officers. But officers, we're gonna rule on some things with the state, I think, no one's gonna be happy with the arbitration.
Well, nobody ever is.
No one ever is, and that's the point, Methuen's gonna have to pull up their pants and, 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 and tighten the belt a little bit.
Come back and it's gonna cost you three million more dollars or two million more dollars.
I don't think it's gonna cost that much.
What if it does?
I don't think it will.
This reminds me of when I had Billy Manzi on the show and he fired Joe Solomon, and then he hired Kathy Levine to replace him. And I said, what if Joe Solomon wins, and now you've got two chiefs cuz you just gave her a contract, well, that's not gonna happen. But what if it does, Billy?
Different situation.
It's not gonna happen, and then it happens.
Different situation, very different situation.
Whenever you're going to a court, whenever you're going to arbitration, you don't know what they're gonna say. They could, they could say triple damages based on all of the illegalities that happened on the city side of that contract. I mean, I, 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 I watched that vote, and I couldn't believe there wasn't at least one council that said, why are we taking this risk when we're so poor right now?
And not to mention, that's another good point, we were also voting on that right when COVID was starting. The city was looking at a seven million dollar shortfall, and we didn't have an HR director yet either, now we do. If this vo- if this contract came maybe a little bit earlier, or even right before the new council came in, there were, there could have been a good shot that that could have passed. But just on the financial side of it, it, it would have, it would have hurt Methuen.
Here's what I'm worried about, I'm worried this goes to court, the cops get a hell of a lot more money than you guys think they're gonna get, because most, all of the illegalities that we've seen uh, that had to do with that contract, or maybe illegality is the wrong word, but inappropriateness, the inappropriate things that happened that had to do with that contract, were all on the city side, not on the police side. My fear is that they're gonna win a boatload of money, and you've already borrowed four million dollars from the state, you can't go back again. And that puts you into full receivership because of that, that's what, I'm worried my state tax dollars that I pay in North Andover is gonna go to bail out Methuen again, because they made a bad decision and took a chance when they shouldn't have taken that chance.
I don't think it'll be that bad, I don't, I don't, I don't.
Well, here's the best part about the show, when Billy Manzi said that on my show ten years ago.
If I'm wrong in five years, count from now, give me a call, and, and.
A year from now, we'll be pulling up the tape, and we'll be saying, did, did Nick make a good financial decision by taking the chance or not? And it'll, I'll rest on whatever the arbitrator says, right?
Exactly.
That'd be awesome. So, is the city council, let's just get away from like all the stuffy stuff. Is the city council, working on the city council, what you thought it was gonna be when you ran for the job? I mean, you served on the school committee, so you had an idea, but is it what you thought it was gonna be?
It goes back to, no, it does, no, because I think COVID, again, you go back to COVID. No, no one in this world today, uh, if you said to me last year, Nick, we're gonna be in the middle of a pandemic, and I probably had to look up what, what pandemics were into the world and what would happen if something like that happened. Um, everything we do day-to-day right now is unprecedented. Tomorrow, there could be a spike in something, and someone from the WHO or the CDC comes out and says, well, you needed to start doing this, and it'll take us two to three weeks to figure out what that is, and then we'll roll it out, again, again.
Shouldn't we just go back to normal? Shouldn't we just say, look, we were originally told that this was much more infectious than it really is, we were originally told that it's transmissible on services, and now we know it's not. We were originally told that two million people were gonna die, and now we've seen in six months that that's not the case. Shouldn't, shouldn't we, I'm not saying it's not, I'm not saying it's not real, and I'm not saying it's not dangerous, but it's not as dangerous or as transmissible as they said. Shouldn't we just go back to normal, shouldn't we just say, open the schools, open city hall, let's take some precautions if we have to, if someone's gonna, I have an autoimmune disease, I'm the first one, if I get it, I'm gonna go.
I have family, I, I mean, my, my brother has MS, my father has MS, I mean, eh, you know, for me, it's not about do we just open and, and see what happens? I think you need to have a phase of approach. You're learning, look at New Zealand right now, they have zero cases for the last hundred days. Now, don't get me wrong, New Zealand's an island in the middle, you know, off the coast of Australia, it's very different. But, if, if we followed the appropriate guidelines originally, let's say when this all rolled out and happened, okay? If every state just fall, I know, and again, east coast got hit hard, west coast got hit hard, nowhere in the Midwest hit, got hit yet, you know, it was very different. If everyone just followed same suit, I think we'd be in a very different place than we are today, and that's easy for me to say, because we are where we are now. But I think going forward, y- you can't just use, um, you know, guinea pigs. Yeah, you know, especially our children, we can't just say, hey, we're gonna open up the school and, and just see what happens overnight. Or, you know, we just looked at Mississippi, you got, um, you got uh, Georgia right now reopening. There's a whole school that they had to shut down in Mississippi, because one kid got COVID, and that affected a hundred and sixteen student, students, and now that whole school has to get cleaned, and that's closed for two weeks.
Right, but you know, but you know, it didn't happen. None of those kids got sick, and none of those kids died, they, they tested positive.
Find out, and we'll find out in, in a few weeks if, if any of those kids did test positive, we're not gonna find that overnight. Anything that happens today isn't gonna be a tomorrow's, you know, answer. In two weeks or a week and a half from now, that's where we're gonna have to look at the data. Now, another thing is, is, and I don't wanna scare parents, but something I've been paying attention to, and I, I work, I've been working in pharmaceuticals, um, in HR and talent acquisition for over ten years now. There's something called um, multi uh, system inflammatory syndrome, M I S C. And C is part of the COVID dash. It's a disease that's coming, or syndrome that's happening after a child is diagnosed with COVID nineteen, M I S dash C. And I think the total cases in the United States right now are like two hundred and fifty, and with maybe a dozen.
That's worth closing all the schools.
No, but it's worth looking into what's going to be the downstream effect if students were to get COVID. Over a hundred thousand students, or a hundred thousand children, excuse me, have gone COVID over the last two weeks.
Right, but most of them, the vast majority, you, it's very misleading to say they got COVID, because you can get COVID and not get sick.
And not have symptoms, you're absolutely right, you're absolutely right.
This is what, what, what's frustrating for me is you watch CNN every day. And so this is what, what, what's frustrating for me is you watch CNN every day and they're talking about cases.
It's different though, per person. You don't know how, even the flu is different.
Right.
I've never gone the flu vaccine or in the last 10 years, 15 years.
From the flu than from COVID and we don't shut schools down for the flu.
Very different, very different, very different. You're looking at it as something that not, not even our experts in leading medicine know about yet.
What I know is we were told at the beginning that if we locked down the country and just flattened the curve, we'd be okay. And that turned out not to be true. We were told if we wore masks, we were more likely to get COVID because people touch the mask, adjust the mask and if they get the COVID on their hand, they're getting it.
And I said that was BS at the beginning too.
And then they, and then they.
Mask shortage, that's why they did it.
But then they admitted they lied. So my point is, everything that they've told us, not everything, but a lot of the things that they told us at the very beginning, we all blindly followed them because they were the experts. And they either lied or turned out to be wrong.
But everything is experimental. We've got to have the mindset that even our leaders today don't have all the answers because this is all experimental.
So why are we still listening to them? Like you're giving me the reason why they were wrong, but they've been wrong. So why are we still treating as if it's etched in stone, as if it's, it's the holy word of God. It, that we have to wear masks, we have to distance, we have to this, we have to that.
I know we live in the freest country in the world, but we also have a high population density here of over what? 350 million people.
Right.
We have a lot of abilities to, I mean, here's the thing is, we're not, we're not going to shut down domestic travel. We're not going to shut down fully international travel. But what we can do is build a case that says, today, we need to do this, this and this to be able to say in three weeks that we've done, we, we've achieved objectives.
Right.
They started doing that at the beginning, but then the objectives kept on going out further and further.
Right. They kept changing. It was flat in the curve and then suddenly it was need a vaccine.
Because we're learning more and more about what can happen.
So if they don't know, and we know they don't know, and we know that they're learning as they go. Why are they saying things as if it's etched in stone? Why are they saying things as it's a fact? Do not wear your mask. As if it's a fact, we just have to flatten the curve, then we'll be fine. And flatten the curve, we, we all listened, we all believed our leaders, except me. Everybody believed the leaders, everybody tried, they did the right thing. They made the personal sacrifices. They closed their businesses. They stayed home.
Yep. People lost their jobs. People, people are hurting today and I.
We've destroyed the greatest economy in the history of mankind over a lie.
Oh, I don't think it's a lie. I don't think it's a lie.
Well, at the very least, at the very least a falsehood.
I think every day we're learning more about this disease. And I think, you know, you, you put, you put, yes, you put your faith in the leaders that you put in charge. And I mean, perfect example is, you know, North Andover is going into a hybrid model. Methuen's going into a hybrid model and a phased approach. Haverhill is looking at a, is at a, a hybrid. And actually I think it's mostly remote right now. And Lawrence just said today in the paper that they are going to be completely remote until further notice.
Now, Lawrence, I get, because this, they still have a spike in Lawrence because they have so many nursing homes.
Yeah.
But nobody's talking about that. Nobody's talking about the fact that 50 to 60% of the people who are dying from this disease are in nursing homes. They're 90 years old, they're 80 years old. And that children are not transmitting it as easily and getting it.
It's a domino effect. It's a ripple. Even if, let's say, even if, if a teacher gets it, okay? She goes into classroom, she's interacting with her teachers, her colleagues, and then her students. And just one student gets it and brings it back home. And we say, okay, they're not transmitting it, you know, as, as easy as a teacher could or, or an adult could. But even if that one child got a strain that they said, oh, he got it or she got it. Now it's infecting that whole classroom. That whole classroom now goes home and affects their parents or their, or their, their guardian. That guardian who works in another place is now affecting their work of place. That teacher goes home to her, her kids and now infects another school potentially. There's so many downstream effects to this.
I agree with everything you just said, but why are we only looking at that one side?
But we look at, we gotta look at the phased approach.
The, the damage that's being caused by people staying home and not going to school.
There's a mental illness factor. There is absolutely.
Child abuse, kids that aren't getting fed at home.
I think, I, I think a lot of school systems and, and especially in Massachusetts have kept that, that, that food aspect where Methuen's done a great job. I could say Lowell and North Andover have too. Where they're, they have the afternoon where the kids, parents can come and pick up lunches and, and snacks for their kids for the day or the week, depending on the school system. I think our, our police and, and fire, the outreach, I see the photos every day on social media.
Kids need socialization. Kids need, kids need to be in school.
And you see that spiking up a little bit. You see the kids going to play baseball. They're going to sports. They're riding bikes. You go to a park today and you'll see kids in the park running around or riding their bike. You'll see that.
Right. So it's too, so it's not too unsafe to sit at Salisbury Beach with 500 people around you with no masks. It's not unsafe to go to Walmart. It's not unsafe to go on a bus, but it's unsafe to sit in a classroom?
Again, there's a lot of cities around Massachusetts.
I just want consistency. That's all I want.
The governor said it perfectly yesterday. We have 350 towns and cities around us. 268 of them can go back. Methuen's actually one of those on, on the no list of going back right away.
No, no, no. Methuen's green. Methuen can go back.
They're still there. They're green. They're not white.
Right.
If you look at Western Mass, they're all white. That's no cases. Anything that falls on that green, yellow, red, there's still a chance of some sort of spike or cases going up. Or down, they can, Methuen could be white tomorrow for all we know. But that grid still has a color. And I think anytime there's a color on that grid, there's a chance of something happening or a spike happening. Lawrence is right next door. It's the only red dot in the area right now. Everyone I think is yellow and green.
Yeah, because they've got so many nursing homes.
Regardless of it's, if it's nursing homes.
But you can't say regardless because that's the actual reason.
But, okay, so if my, if, if, let's say I have a, a father that's in a nursing home, okay? And I go visit my father and some of them are letting people visit. Sometimes the, the whole COVID and you can't go visit people. I know people that visit their family members daily at some of these nursing homes. And they walk in and they walk out. All right. And then who knows, they didn't wipe a railing or they, they, they shook a hand of someone and they had COVID. Now you're bringing that as a spike. There's a chance. That's the only thing I'm getting at, Tom.
And I'm not disagreeing with that, but what I want is I want to have that much time and effort being put into the damage that's being done to our society and our children by not going back to school and not reopening businesses.
You can't have 7,000.
I just want, I want this.
But Methuen, Methuen's the 14th largest school district in the Commonwealth, okay?
Interesting.
7,000 students that go back all at once.
Right.
That's 7,000 people. Let's say this, let's say.
They all get it. They get herd immunity and we all move forward.
But even let's say there's, there's another 2,000 teachers and staff too. So you're looking at about 9,000 people. And then who knows, the admins and the coaches and all that. Let's just round it out at 10,000 people that go to Methuen Public Schools. Those 10,000 people may have a, a reach of, let's say, even if there was two parents in a household or guardians and, and that's not the case for most cases. But let's just say, let's just add another, times it by two, 20,000 people. And then you times that by two, 40,000 people. That's what could happen when these kids go back to school. We don't know what the outcome is going to be.
But we also know that suicides are up, drug use is up among children. We know that depression is up, kids are, more kids are being put on depression medications.
Depression piece, I, there is a mental aspect to this.
So I just wanted to even know.
But it's not just children either. It's people working from home.
I agree.
The, 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 the fire and police officers, it's, it's across the board. You need to understand, not you per se, but in general, everything we do day to day is going to change for at least until there's a vaccine. It doesn't matter if you get on a plane tomorrow and you travel to a Caribbean island or you travel to Florida or you travel to visit your family in the Midwest. Every day could be a different conversation. I booked a trip. I went away. I went on vacation, got my negative COVID test back. I was safer.
Did you go to AFC urgent care?
I did. I did. I did.
We love them.
I did go to AFC urgent care. The, the place that I went, and I'm not going to disclose where I went because I've already gotten two negative tests since I left and came back. The place where I went required a, a COVID test.
Right.
We provided it. Got temperature checks at the airport where we arrived, temperature checks at the hotel and the resort, and we stayed on the resort. Coming, I was safer where I was than coming through Boston international. I had direct flights. I came through the international terminal. I called the governor's office the next day and I called um, the East Boston state rep that I know very well, Adrian Madrano. I called Adrian and I said, Adrian, Massport didn't ask one conversa, one, one COVID question. They checked my passport and sent me on my way.
Right.
Two days later, the governor announced that he's doing an ambassadorship program at, at, at Terminal E and, and domestic flights at Massport. Not saying I had anything to do with that, but where I'm getting at is that two and a half weeks ago, he went to place with this 14 day travel restriction, COVID test and a traveler form. And the biggest hub of transportation in Massachusetts wasn't even pushing that, that method.
And yet you've got thousands of people walk, going through that terminal every day.
Yes, internationally.
And we're not seeing, and we're not seeing a spike because of it.
And we're, no, we're not, we're not in, in many cities.
Right.
But Boston is still spiking. Boston is still spiking.
Yeah, Boston's got a lot of nursing homes. Like when they talk about spikes, if you actually look in, if you look into the data of those spikes, you're going to find that at least 50% of those spikes are people that are in nursing homes that are getting it.
We can go back and forth with all the data and forms. It's going to change tomorrow. It doesn't matter what we say.
But you know what I like about this conversation? I can't have this conversation with Neil Perry. Cause he immediately starts dismissing me when I start talking facts and data, even though he's supposed to be the facts and data guy. And, and he wants to talk about individual cases and individual people and people getting sick that he cares about, all of which I understand. But when you're in a leadership position in government, you need to be able to talk these things out. You need to be able to, you need to be able to, like we have, like we did today. We need to agree on some stuff. We agree on a lot more than we disagree.
No, because I, 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 well, I, yes, and, and, well, it depends on the topic too.
I mean, on this.
On this. But where we're at today in Methuen, I gotta say, Methuen's been on top of their cases. We haven't, I don't think we have had a case in the last four days, but that could be wrong. I know over the weekend we had no cases. You know, we, we've, we've put restrictions in place. The schools are clean. The, the city hall's been cleaned. I think the city itself is, you know, we've all sacrificed something, you know, the kids now, the, the sports, the Pop Warner sports and, and uh, the football uh, right now has been canceled for the summer.
Just disgraceful, just disgraceful.
MIAA is still up in the air. They think they should push it until the 16th of September. The Big Ten and um, a lot of college football teams have canceled their seasons.
Ridiculous.
It, well, again, it goes back to, we don't know what the situation's going to be when everyone goes back to school. And I think because we are going into that time of the year, I mean, half the South is back to school.
Right.
Over the next few weeks, we'll be able to say, well, this is what's gone wrong. And you know, again, it goes back to the state too. And, and again, I could, I could move towards agreeing with you on this. The governors, governors dropped the ball on a few things recently and the secretary of education also has. When you tell the school districts to go and make a plan to reopen and then drop a bomb, you know, day before the plan is supposed to be submitted on all these new CDC guidelines. You're like, are you kidding me?
Right.
And again, I, it goes to the ever, you know, the ever changing situation.
If they don't know, and what I keep, and you've said this multiple times on this program and I hear it every time I have this conversation with somebody. If they don't know, and we don't know, right? We don't know a lot about this disease. How do you put a plan together? You don't know. We're just guessing. Why not just go back?
No, because I think the phased reopening plan is perfect right now. You know, if, if things be, if, if we could speed things up, great.
Are you guys going to be at the city council meeting live now or are you guys still going to be doing them all?
I believe so. I think, I think going forward, we're live.
That's a good sign.
It is. No, I like, I like being in the great hall.
People are just so frustrated. I talk to people every day. People are just so frustrated. They just want this thing to be over. And maybe, maybe because we're being impatient, but.
Well, no, we're Americans. We, we like to be able to go out and do things and not be told that we can't go to a bar, take our kids to school or do sports or travel. I love traveling. I'm a big traveler and, and, and for me to, and I mean, a lot of people have lost their jobs. A lot of people are closing up shops.
Right.
You have companies and corporations across the country that are, are closing their business. You need to, to have a personal, you gotta have some sort of personal connection to that somewhere. And in government like myself, my decisions are always going to be in the best interest of the, the family and the constituents of Methuen. Or if it's a higher office of my district of, of the state. You, you gotta understand, it might work for us today, but it won't work for us tomorrow. And that's when tomorrow we come back to the drawing board and we say, we gotta do something that works today and, and, and could work further on.
We are, uh, we're a little, we're a little over time.
Thanks Ben. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Ben. Can, can, can you just talk in the last minute? Um, of what's coming up on the city council? What can people look forward to in the next few meetings? What are you guys looking to work on?
Um, so we're going to look at infrastructure again. We're going to try to pass a, a final um, infrastructure bill to be able to uh, pay for some of the IT technologies to be able to finally get the city in a good spot to implement the, the immune system. I think we'll have um, uh, more monies to be able to give to the police department to be able to do some academy training and get the last cop back.
Is that going to get passed to your colleagues?
I would hope so. I would hope so. I mean, it'd bring back everyone on the cop side um, that were non-intimate or were going through the academy again. It changes every day. And I think um, again, my plan is to get some um, economic boost into the city if we can. I mean, that was one of my goals on the um, on the election piece was to make sure our, our, our economy was boot, you know, getting a little bit stronger. And again, the loop is uh, still a, a, a piece that I'm overseeing and looking at more and more. And I think another uh, big item that's going to come up is uh, redistricting. And I know um, Councilor Baurgad will be chairing that and I've kind of put my uh, name out there to join that committee. I think redistrict, redistricting in Methuen is going to be a big topic over the next two years after the census is completed. You're going to potentially move to a ward system or um, you know, maybe additional counselors on the council.
See, I think everybody should be at large.
I don't, I don't disagree with that, but I think, you know, district counselors are important, especially with a lot of cities like around us too. I, you don't see a lot of cities that have a, a large counselors. You see some representation. But I think um, you know, with that, with new wards and with new districts comes with the charter. And I know there's a charter change out there. I think the charter needs to be revamped, redone. I know there's a committee that did it, but again, that went nowhere. So I, I think we, we need to make sure that.
Cause that needs to come, like it goes back to our question during the campaign. That needs to come from the voters. If you're going to change the charter, it needs to go on the, on the ballot. And it needs to be, it needs to be a cafeteria style thing. You can't have like nine provisions to change the charter and have it all be one question. Cause some people might, some people might want uh, the mayor to be a, a four year, but don't want um, you know.
A counselor to be four years or something like that, yeah.
So it, it needs to be cafeteria style on the ballot. Um, my last question before we go. Um, you guys had a secret meeting uh, about an emergency situation. And you, you guys have yet to reveal publicly why that was. I know what it was. And if it had been any other community but Methuen, I would have put it on Facebook and blown it out. But I understand the situation. When will the council be able to tell the public what you guys did in that a executive session, how much money you spent and why?
Well, I, I, I don't, I don't know of any illegal.
Did I say illegal?
I think you said illegal.
If I said illegal, I'd take it back. Cause it was not illegal. Because it was an emergency situation.
It was an emergency executive session that we had. Um, I, I'm hoping in the next week or two, we'd be able to, you know, come out. But again, um, you know, majority of the council outside of one person voted on, during that.
And I get it. I, I, I mean, I know it's an emergency situation. You had to do it the way you did it. I, I just want to know when the public's going to know about it.
I, I'm hoping in the next week or two, we'll be able to.
Because there were city workers who have called me and said, I'm affected by this and nobody's notified me about what's going on. And I can't even broach that publicly because I can't really talk about what it is that you guys did. So I can't.
Yeah, no, I, I, again, it, I think in the next two weeks, we'll be able to release whatever happened um, in that session. And I mean, again, we have to vote on those, those minutes to release them. But um, again, I, I want to put it out there that the council did everything in their power accurately, correctly. And, and I think the, the complaint that's out there is just a, a ghost hunt at this point.
No, listen, and, and I, I, I get why you did what you did. I want the people at home to know.
I don't know what you know, what I know, but.
The day after it happened, I got a phone call from somebody who was in the room in executive session who told me everything that was going on.
That's not good to hear.
And they, and, and they followed it up with um, I'm going to give you this information, but please don't blow it out until we're able to do it publicly. I just want you to know. So I'm happy to keep that secret. I don't mind doing that. If it was any, again, if this was Lawrence, it would have been on Facebook the next day. But, but because.
Right now that song in Hamilton's playing in my head in the room where it happens. You know that song? That's what's playing in my head right now.
So, but, but I want people at home to know that it's coming, that they, that, that there's going to be transparency on this once the emergency has been lifted.
Yes. It's, the one thing I'll say, it's a security issue and, and I'm glad, I'm glad we were able to achieve this. This is a, this will be a pillar conversation when it comes out on who stood up for what was right in this whole situation.
Any final words?
Uh, you know, go uh, go Red Sox, go uh, Bruins, go Celtics.
They're not playing.
They are playing.
They are playing?
Red Sox are six games in last place right now. Uh, Bruins are one up in the Stanley Cup finals and I think the Celts, Celtics lost last night, today. Oh, was it, oh, this morning. That's right. They play this morning. So, does that mean they're out? No, they have a few more games. So, yeah. But uh, hopefully football season, go Cam Newton.
All right. I don't know any, I don't, I don't know anything about sports.
I don't know who Tom Brady is anymore.
I don't know. I don't know who that is. All right. I appreciate everybody for uh, for paying attention today. Then I want to thank our sponsors, McLennan Real Estate, Century 21. We want to thank them for providing food last night at the TMF Family Dinner for the homeless. Matt and Sam and everybody over there. We love them. AFC Urgent Care, go get your COVID test. Make sure you go online and register first. Marsane and Sun Construction, now's the time to get that porch fixed. Uh, we want to thank Climate Design Systems, Horizon Home Care, Barelli's Deli, where I'm going for my meats right after this. JG's Ice Cream. JG's Ice Cream. All right. Melvin Taylor says we gotta go home. Can you speak that a little louder? Melvin Taylor says we gotta go home. So go home already.